Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand as our student board member, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Arminio?
Here.
Mr. Chiarella? Mrs. Dimeo?
Here.
Mrs. Koleponowicz?
Here.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Pelori?
Here.
Mr. Ryback?
Here.
Mrs. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Tofano?
Here.
And Mr. Rutske?
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 14th, 2019, at all schools, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Dagorski. As you can see, we have a lot on the agenda today, but before we move on with the agenda, I just have a quick announcement. Last Tuesday, at the Board of Education's special meeting, the board members came out of closed session and read a resolution into the record. Since there were very few people left in the public at that time, I again would like to make the announcement that the Board of Education has appointed Dr. Dory Alvik as the next Superintendent of Schools, and wish her the very best as... And we wish her the very best as the educational leader of our district, and know that she's going to do an awesome job as the next Superintendent for at least a few more years. So, thank you, Dr. Alvik, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will go to number five on the agenda, the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education Meeting of April 30th, 2019. Motion and a second needed?
Second.
I didn't get a first.
Some...
Mr....oh, Mr. Ryback? Mr. Dimeo? Any comments or additions or corrections to the minutes?
This is for April 30th?
This is for April 30th, the regular Board of Ed meeting. Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain or recuse? Okay, the approval of the minutes for the closed session meeting of April 30th, 2019. Mr. Ryback? Second by Mr. Pelori. Again, additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam President, I still think they're insufficient, but it seems like the things that I think should be put in are not really given any...well, they're dismissed, so I'm just gonna say I believe they're still insufficient.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Arminio is opposing?
Tofano also.
Mr. Tofano also? Abstain or recuse? Then the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education Meeting of May 8th, 2019.
So, Luke.
Mr. Pelori? Mr. Ryback? Additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ms. Arminio is opposing?
No.
Mr. Tofano is opposing? Abstain or recuse? Okay, then the last one, the closed session meeting of May 8th, 2019.
So, I'll second that.
Mr. Ryback? Mr. Rutske?
Did you say closed meeting? Closed session.
It's the closed session meeting of May 8th, 2019.
Probably already voted on that.
No, we did the closed session meeting of April 30th. We have two dates, April 30th and May 8th. Any additions or corrections to these minutes? Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Ms. Arminio is opposing? Abstain or recuse? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our student board members' reports.
So, a cabaret night from the MTHS Footlights Club was held this Monday in the Commons, where students got the chance to showcase their singing, and today was the first day finals for high school students, and testing will continue every day until May, June...uh, Monday, June 24th.
FBLA students will be traveling to San Antonio for the National Leadership Conference the last week of June, and a few students attended the American Legion Boys and Girls State Leadership Program. I want to thank the staff for a wonderful school year, and I also want to thank the Board of Education for making the last two years a great learning experience for me.
So, Shreeja, you will be leaving us, so if you'd like to come up here...see if we could do this. You have been a board member, representative for the last two years. You are involved with the DECA International Conference competitor, and also the Executive Vice President. You are a member of FBLA, an AP Scholar. You're on the Monroe Township High School JV Tennis Team. You are, like I said, the Monroe Township Board of Education Student Representative. You work at Center State as a volunteer, and you will, as far as I know, be majoring in Finance at the New York University Stern School of Business. So, at this time, we would like to give you this certificate of appreciation, in sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the students and schools of Monroe Township, while serving as a student board member of the Monroe Township Board of Education from July 2017 through June 2019, and wish you the best of luck in your endeavors, and I do not apologize. Thank you. Okay, at this time, student board members, we have a lot of presentations on the agenda, so we will start with the Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial Essay Committee. Dr. Alvik, would you please take this?
Yes, I'm actually gonna turn it over to our Supervisor of Science and Social Studies, Ms. Bonnie Casalotto.
Good evening, and thank you. It's my great pleasure tonight to introduce you to Mr. David Rothman from the Monroe Township Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial Commission. He'll be bestowing some certificates and awards to our students this evening. Mr. Rothman?
Thank you. (applause) And let me, one, thank the committee for inviting me here, and also, specific call out to Ms. Bonnie Casalotto and Matty Philippis. They make it seamless for us to do our program. With that said, I'm Dave Rothman, and I'm from the Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial Committee. Let's see, Andy, Peter, Rupa, you may not be familiar with this, some of your colleagues have seen this before. What we do, the Henry Rickles Holocaust Memorial Committee is named after Henry Rickles, who was under General Patton, liberated some camps, moved to Concordia in his retirement, and started a committee where the Holocaust was remembered, through a Yom HaShua program, through an essay contest. On his passing, we named the committee after him. What we do in the committee, we go to, and Ms. Casalotto and Matty Philippis make it work so well, we have a freshman auditorium for one hour, and we bring survivors who happen to still be with us and here living in Monroe, and they share their life stories. Twenty minutes, they talk about what they do, we leave a little time afterwards for a Q&amp;A, and then we challenge the students, the whole freshman class, and it's voluntary. We're gonna give you a couple of questions, like, why is it important to even learn about the Holocaust? What would you do if you met a Holocaust denier? Why being a bystander is wrong? Describe it, and other questions like that, and we challenge them. It's voluntary. Steve, I came here last year and said to you, we have 280 essays, and I was real impressed with that. This year, we had 361.
Wow.
Then my committee gets around, and we kick around, we read some of the essays, we go back and forth, what do you think? We rate them, and after a lot of arguments, tribulations, everything else, we came out with nine that everyone agreed were perfect. We happen to have those nine essay winners with us today. I want to share one or two essays with you, so you at least get a sense of the kind of excellent work, a little voluntary, that these kids have done. So let me first call up Caitlin Russell. Caitlin?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Russell, I am currently a sophomore, and as stated before, I am here to read my essay about the important remembrance of the Holocaust. But before I begin, I would just like to say a few words of thank you and acknowledgements. First, I'd like to thank David Rothman for giving us the opportunity to sit down and listen to the Holocaust survivors tell their stories. I am very grateful to be one of the lucky nine that are here today to accept the reward and be a part of this amazing event. I would also like to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to sit down and listen to the stories. It affected nine of us, but it also affected every single person in that auditorium that day, and I really hope that the event continues to be as successful as it was in the future days, so thank you. So, Luke, begin. The Important Remembrance of the Holocaust. After hearing about eyewitness accounts of the Holocaust, it made me, as a student, learn how imperative it is to learn about the traumatic time in history. As we sat in the auditorium, listening to stories and the impersonal encounters made by the survivors, it became clear that everyone during the Holocaust had been affected. The survivors suffered mentally, physically, and emotionally. Personally, I believe it is extremely imperative to students to truly understand the events that occurred during the Holocaust. Many students have already learned about the Holocaust either through family members, classroom settings, textbooks, novels, and et cetera. Less than half of those same students have granted the privilege to sit down and listen to the survivors tell their story. One of my teachers during my freshman year had constantly repeated the saying, "What you teach a child becomes their truth." When it came time to learn about the Holocaust, it made me understand the true meaning of what she was portraying. Teachers teach students about the Holocaust to teach them how to be respectful, treat others fairly, and not to judge someone for being...for something that we may not truly understand. The Holocaust was a time of persecution, not only for the Jews, but Roma's, beggars, mentally-physical ill, homosexuals, and many others. I believe that a similar horrific event can be prevented if the future children are taught respect and tolerance at a very young age. In studying the Holocaust, it is evident how intolerance can lead to cruelty and mistreatment of individuals that are different from us. Present-day society continues to struggle with issues regarding racism, bullying, alienation of individuals who differ from the mainstream. For this reason, it is imperative for the continued education of students on the lessons of the Holocaust to prevent its recurrence. With these lessons being taught in school, there is a greater chance that one group will not dominate and oppress others. This is achieved with constant education of the consequences of the Holocaust, and is further enhanced by the firsthand portrayal of the life experience from the Holocaust survivors. Little by little, and each passing year, continued education of our Holocaust lessons, our society as a whole will become more accepting of various cultures and beliefs. Over the last seven decades, we have observed significant progress towards achieving this goal. However, continued effort is still continued to be reined on track. Thank you.[820.41][820.41](applause)
We incentivize with a $50 gift certificate. I don't know that it made the numbers bigger, but we're very happy to do so. Okay, I'm gonna call on Venetia Patel, she'll share hers as well.
I would also like to start off with a few words of thanks. As David mentioned, I'm Venetia, I am a sophomore at this high school, and not only did I have a chance to listen to these survivor stories in our auditorium, but I was also given the opportunity to listen to these survivor stories at the memorial event held at the middle school last year, and be a part of their rehearsals, and the entire process that goes behind organizing one of these memorial events, that impacts not only the younger generation, but also the generations that remember the Holocaust and its direct afterfacts. I would also like to thank the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity, as well as many others over our years here. So, I wrote...I wrote...I wrote an essay on the same prompt as Caitlin, and here's my take on it. The Holocaust, the horrific event in human history that ended 73 years ago, across the ocean, where 6 million Jewish people, as well as 5 million people, such as the handicapped, injured, and minority groups, were slaughtered without mercy. Since this mass murder, there have at least been three generations born worldwide. But as we get farther and farther away from the Holocaust, fewer and fewer of the lucky survivors are left to tell of the murder, cruelty, and prejudice that spiraled out of control. This reason is exactly why it is imperative that students from my generation and beyond have the opportunity to hear for themselves the trepidation that our fellow human beings have gone through. Whether these stories be recorded or recited by the survivors themselves, nothing is more impactful than hearing each and every experience. It is one thing to hear about the events and the precious lives lost in a textbook or a video, and a completely different one to hear the primary record of these experiences. The Holocaust also teaches lessons of love, of understanding, of acceptance, lessons that every generation can utilize to ensure that another mass execution of innocent lives does not occur. Especially in the current global climate we live in, it is more important than ever to take these lessons of acceptance and understanding into the world, so that there is less loathing and judgmental behavior. If these lessons had been prevalent in society over 75 years ago, would the Holocaust have taken place? Probably not, but we will never know. So, the most we can do is ensure that another mass eradication does not take place. The importance of teaching the Holocaust is evident in the patterns of history. History has been said to repeat itself, thus, events that can be prevented with the right measures and environment are ones that could save millions of lives later on. What a child is taught is what a child becomes, meaning a child taught acceptance and understanding of those who are different from them will become an adult who goes on to instill those lessons in their children, leading to more positivity and less prejudice all around. Children taught hatred and prejudice from early on will grow to be the adults who are unwelcoming of those who seem different than them, leading to the actions that reflect the hatred found around the world. We can hope to raise caring children who grow into accepting adults, or we can actively engrain these lessons to prevent genocides and hate crimes. The latter is the way we can ensure ethnic acceptance, as well as an overall reduction in hatred against those who are different because humanity is built on the accomplishments of those who are different. After getting the opportunity to meet the few survivors who were able to speak at the high school, I further realized that if my generation and I did not hold on to these lessons, as well as the stories, experiences, and emotions, they would be lost in the fabric of time, buried under layers of history, until a genocide occurs again. Because history repeats itself if nothing is done to change it. If lessons are not learned the first time around, we, as a human race, are setting ourselves up for another event of ethnic extermination. But we should not wait until the next genocide to peel back the layers of history and to unearth these lessons. These stories and losses are to be remembered and carried with us to prevent the repetition of history, as well as honoring those who survived and were lost. Let us remember the lives that were lost and honor them by carrying forth the lessons of acceptance and diversity to the generations beyond mine, so we may never have to lose an entire generation to preventable prejudice and hatred.[1120.12][1120.12](applause)
The word "wow" comes to mind. Okay, let me read off the others, the excellent, the perfect score winners. Krishna Mahin. Krishna? Krishna? Krishna, thank you, and thank you. Okay, next one up, Taran Krishnam. Let's announce the winners. Excellent job. Okay. Pavitra Veera. Thank you. Anisa Patel. Thank you so much. Okay, Emily Kangalosi. Hi, Emily. Thank you. Excellent job. Okay, Ethan Henley. And Kimmy...forgive me, Kimmy Yadlapalli? Did I get it right? That is our presentation for this year. We've already had the essay contest with the current freshman class, and I'll see you next year with those winners. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to our student award winners, and for the 361 students who participated in this. It's very...numbers are awesome, and we look forward to hearing from you again next year, reading, hearing the wonderful stories that our students tell. Thank you. So, at this time, we are going to the Historical Preservation Commission Essay Contest. Dr. Alvik?
Okay, so again, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Casalotto. Her department is the one that worked with the Historical Preservation Commission to offer this essay contest to our students.
Thank you again, Dr. Alvik. Over the past two years, we've worked very hard to establish a new connection and partnership with the Monroe Township Historical Preservation Commission. We have many great plans that'll be folded into some new curriculum writing this summer, but right now, I'd like to recognize Lisa Makita from the Commission, and also Susan Rudy, who will be making student presentations for their essay winners.
Good evening. On behalf of the Monroe Township Historic Preservation Commission and the Mayor's Office, we're excited to be here tonight to present our scholarship awards for our second annual essay contest. It's our pleasure, working with the Roche Kappa National Honor Society, Social Studies, Human...high school students. Everyone wrote terrific essays about Monroe Township's history, and we wanted to thank Bonnie for working with us to help us determine the creative topic choices that the students could choose from. We truly enjoyed reading the essays, and it was tough to select the winners. We would like to say to the students that they all did a terrific job, which they, their parents, and their teachers can be very proud of. So, at this point in time, I'd like to turn our presentation over to my colleague Lisa Macida, who will be presenting the awards.
Thank you to the Board of Ed for having us. We'd like to call up all the participants. First one is Johanna Gretzick. And Matthew Skobalev. So, we recognized all the students for their participation, and we're very pleased to acknowledge that Kelsey Stromberg is the second-place winner with a $200 gift card, and Matthew Skobalev is the first-place winner with a $300.
Wow. Again, we'd like to congratulate our students for the awesome job that they do. Every...we're just so proud of the students we have in Monroe, and how they want to participate in everything, so congratulations.[1496.87][1496.87](applause) So, another presentation is the Seal of Bilingual Literacy Recognition, Dr. Alvik.
So, one of the things that we are so excited about the last few years is our students earning the Seal of Bilingual Literacy in languages in our...in their high school career. This earns them a seal on their transcripts as they leave Monroe Township High School, so it is pretty impressive that they've done this. We actually have 17 students that received the seal this year, so I'm gonna invite Dr. Rozell to come up and share who the students are.
Okay, the first student we have is Sonia Lindjanini. Sonia earned the seal in Spanish. Congratulations. The next student is Anshul Rana. Who also earned the seal in Spanish. Rajvi Shaw. Danielle Larkin. Congratulations to all of these students, this is an incredible accomplishment, and we are very proud of you.[1762.41][1762.41](applause)
Can you tell us how many seats for each language? Okay, so the question is, how many students earned the seal for each language? We had seven, eight students who earned it in Spanish, seven in Italian, and two in French.
What a great job.
That's great.
We could give them another round of applause.[1792.12][1792.12](applause) In the last few months, we've had the opportunity of acknowledging many of our students for doing... doing so many different things during the year and in so many different areas of the schools, that next year, we're going to have to consider having a separate meeting just to honor all of our students, so they don't get lost in the shuffle, excuse me, in the shuffle while we have to do board business. So congratulations again to all of our students this evening. Are we...we're now at student recognitions. More student recognitions. Okay, Dr. Albic, Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Ryback, would you please join me up there as we acknowledge more students?
Okay, so continuing on with our student recognitions, we have one student that I'm going to actually turn this over to Dr. Rozell also. We have one student in our National English Honor Society that has won a prestigious honor that we haven't had here at Monroe before. Dr. Rozell?
Piper Larkin. Piper is the first student to apply for the scholarship for the National English Honor Society, and she was awarded that scholarship. It is a very prestigious award, and we are incredibly proud of her.
Okay, we also have several students this evening that we're honoring in our Youth and Government Club. They have earned some pretty prestigious awards at the state level. So our first one is Kim V. Tran, Outstanding State Officer, Governor's Cabinet 2019, Counsel on National Affairs. Outstanding Written Legislation, Jamie Cashman. Lobby Corps President 2019, Counsel on National Affairs, Pranay Narang. Cleveland Wilson Assembly Speaker 2020, Yash Mather. And Counsel on National Affairs, Nidhi Shah. And our last awards for this evening, our 2019 Varsity Lacrosse Team. Mr. Byer?
Our boys' lacrosse team had a fantastic season, not only this year, but the seniors in this group for four years. This is our second straight conference title. You can clap about that. They were also division champs the last two years. You can clap about that. And this is their third conference title, GMC County Title, in four years, so it's quite an accomplishment for this group of boys. And I just found out today that NJ.com selected Coach Yanoni as the GMC Coach of the Year. And they selected the boys' Monroe Township Boys Lacrosse Team as the Team of the Year in the GMC. So at this time, I'd like to call Coach Yanoni up to introduce each member of his team. Let's hear it for Coach Yanoni.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Byer. It's a great pleasure to recognize the guys tonight. They work extremely hard, and I truly love coaching these guys. I have a great bunch of assistant coaches that help me. I love teaching at Monroe. This is the end of my 20th year. Wow, right? So it's a pleasure to work here, it's a pleasure to teach here, and it's a real pleasure to coach here, so. Many more years, and not to take up a lot of time, but we'll recognize the guys that were on the varsity that helped us win, as Coach Byer said, a GMC title and our third in four years. So Anthony Abrou, come on up. You guys can come in. Anthony's a senior. He'll be attending Sage College. Mike Cavallo. Mike is a senior as well. He'll be playing at Stockton. Robert Dorian. Robert will be playing at Piedmont College. Isaac Hernandez is a senior as well. Sean Saznik, he's our senior. Sean will be playing at St. Vincent's. Steven Angelo, our last senior. Almost our last senior. And then Connor White. And then our underclassmen, who we'll bring back next year, Brandon Scott. Josh Estavilo, our goalie. A.J. Marone. And now our sophomores, Christian Herman. And we have our two brothers, A.J. Gabalanas and Connor Gabalanas. And we have Zach Lassert, our sophomore. Another Zach, Zach Seppi. And then our final sophomore, Matthew Dorian. And then our one freshman who played for us this season, our goalie, Gabe Biannis. And I don't know if everyone knows Coach Garaventi, Joe Garaventi. He brought lacrosse to Monroe. Coach G, it's a pleasure to coach with you as well. Okay. Well, we hope we'll see you here next year, right? Same time next year? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So at this time, this is sort of a bittersweet time in Monroe because it's the last day of, last board meeting of the year, and it's a time when we honor our retirees, and that's the bittersweet part, because while we don't want them to go, they have decided it... So as I was saying, this is a bittersweet night in Monroe because it's a time that we want to honor our retirees, and while we don't want them to go, they have decided that this was their time to go. So we want to thank them for everything they've done for our staff and our school district and especially for all of our children, and I know many of them have been here for many, many years. A lot of them have taught my children, and my last child left about 12 years ago. So we want to thank them and wish them their best wishes for their good future and wherever they decide they need to go to. So congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you the best.
Okay, so let's start. Our first retiree, Mr. Dennis Ventrello. Middle School Teacher of Science, Frances Ballant. High School Teacher of Technology, Kirk Rothel. High School LDTC, Sharon Apptaker. Woodland Teacher of Music, Karen Sworcek. Berkeley Brook Teacher of Physical Education, Jaclyn Winters. High School Teacher of Special Education, Barbara Hilker. Pupil Personnel Service Confidential Secretary to the Director, Flo Muniz. Monroe Township Middle School Teacher of Social Studies, Karen Earl. Brookside Teacher of Music, Janet Kaufman. Oak Tree Speech and Language Teacher, Faith Midlin. We did have several retirees that weren't able to attend this evening, but I still want to announce them. Deborah Goldheckt, Brookside Speech and Language Specialist. Christine Garner-Dwayne, Monroe Township Middle School Teacher of Special Education. Eugene Fajowski, District Custodian. High School Teacher of Special Education, Margaret Cerny. Millay Custodian, Ada Kabansky. Monroe Township Middle School Teacher of Science, Jeannie Chipkowski. Applegarth Media Specialist, Carol Lang. Monroe Township Middle School Head Custodian, Connie Shar. And High School Teacher of Business, Janice Jernigan. And Mr. John Allen, High School Spanish Teacher. And Brookside Custodian, Vacha Gurlaski.
We need to have more great nights like this where we're honoring our students and staff. It's amazing how many great people we have working in our district and now leaving our district. Okay, at this time, we'll have committee reports. Any board members, I know Mr. Mayo, who have a committee report this evening?
We had two things on the agenda today. We had our curriculum document, Algebra 1A B. Algebra is the foundation of all high school mathematics courses. This course is designed to give students the time to gain success of a strong foundation of algebra in order to be successful with each following course. Basic concepts are emphasized initially with a transfer to modeling of real-life applications. It's a double-block class that meets every day for 84 minutes to allow time in class for much-needed practice. Students have the guidance of a teacher for immediate feedback as they work. Student-centered group work is encouraged, allowing for multiple avenues of support. There's increased technology activities that are included to keep the students motivated. This math is, this class is five math credits and five elective credits. And there are also cross-curricular standards with an emphasis on language arts, as well as science skills are included. They apply 21st-century skills. They communicate, apply appropriate academic and technical skills. They communicate clearly and effectively and with reason, and they consider the environmental, social, and economic impact of decisions. In addition, we were introduced to Gaggle presentation. What Gaggle is, it's a algorithm that looks through a student's apps on their iPad, their email, their coursework, and it extracts phrases and words to alert the school of possible suicides, possible danger to students. It's used in 1,500 districts. New Jersey has 105 students that are being looked, and it's been in place for 20 years. So, what happens is if the algorithm identifies a student who may be at risk for suicide, they contact the school, and the school can make appropriate measures to make sure the student is safe. It looks at suicide, violence, profanity, nudity, harassment, and human trafficking. And things are classified in terms of immediate need, that someone needs to, the student is immediate danger, this student is in possible danger, and/or sometimes it will give a student an email response saying, you know, this language is not appropriate. In 2017, 542 lives were saved through Gaggle, and 242 weapons were intercepted. This year alone, it saved 710 lives. So, the next step for this is for Dory to bring it to the administration, them to evaluate it, and then bring it back to the Board of Ed if they decide that this is something that the school should be using, the district should be using.
Any questions for Jill?
Do we have anything similar in the, nothing at all similar to that here?
No.
Other than, we have filters, so some of our filters do pick up some things. This is much more sophisticated than that. It's not just, the piece with Gaggle that makes it a little different is it's not just the algorithm that's picking up the language or the images. There's also a 24 hours a day, seven days a week team of 200 specialists that are, that then, once it's flagged, are looking at it. And then they decide who at the district level needs to be contacted. And all of that would be decided at a district level, who would be the response, who would be the, you know, people that need to be immediately contacted. We could also work with our local law enforcement on it.
It's all confidential.
Yes.
Jill, what's the time for implementation, should this go through?
It would have to be something we would have to look at in the budget.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Finance?
Oh.
Did you have your hand up? You go ahead.
Mrs. Lang, Policy?
Hi, I wanted to give the Policy Committee a report. When we met on June 11th, we reviewed five policies and six regulations, all of them mandated. And basically, what you're seeing, even though they're up for first reading, I'm not sure if it's just going to be one reading because they were no substantive changes. The state has changed the name of the Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System, which is EVVRS, to Student Safety Data System, or SSDS. So, these reflect changes to that, to have the wording changed. And they also included a number of code changes, but nothing substantial in those. I just wanted to give an update that we haven't forgotten that we're going to be working on a vaping policy. We are just waiting for the state to come through with what they're looking for, and it's going to be discussed throughout the summer for vaping. And I also wanted to add that we're going to be looking next month at the policy for field trips because a concern about seat belts was brought up on buses for field trips for students. And we were very fortunate that one of our teachers, Misty Piero, was there and she was in the meeting, and she told us about the wonderful new field trips that are happening in the district where they're bringing the field trip experience to the students. And we were very lucky she got to tell us about the Penguin in school and other things like that. So, I think that's a great option. I also was talking to other policy chair people and talking about seat belts on buses. Part of the problem is right now, there is such a shortage of school bus drivers, and to get any buses for any sort of occasions or any trips out of, it's getting harder and harder for us to even get buses. And then to have control over whether or not the buses that we are using, if we go and get, say, a coach bus, whether or not they have seat belts is impossible. We can't tell them they can, they have to have seat belts if we really want to get a bus for something. So, we're going to have to take a close look at that policy to make sure that our children are safe if they get on buses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rutske, would you like to do Finance?
We're up to Finance. So, we had our Finance meeting tonight at 5:00. Went over a few different items, first of which was a lease purchase agreement that we approved as the Finance Committee. It's roughly $2.5 million over the next five years. Covers computer equipment, instructional equipment, athletic equipment, copiers, facility security equipment, and some buses and vans. So, again, a $2.5 million total purchase, but by leasing it out and spreading it out over five years, it's only a $500,000 hit to the budget each year for the next five years. Bids will go out to various financing companies, and whomever comes in with the lowest interest rate will get that, will get that job. We then went on to our capital reserve transfer. So, this year, this time last year, when we got some extra money from the state, it was roughly $1.6 million. And at that time, we agreed to put $1 million back towards the taxpayer, and we took the $656,602 left over, and we agreed to move it into a capital outlay. And so, tonight, we just basically made it official that that money will be transferred into the capital reserve, which will finance the needs within the long-range facility plan going forward. Our third thing was the food contract with Metz Culinary Management. So, we have a five-year contract with Metz. It's all going well, but we have to renew it every year, and so we just agreed to do so. That we are approving a 2% increase to their management fee, which basically keeps them up with inflation. And at the same time, they guaranteed us a profit of $95,000. So, that's a great job they're doing per Mrs. Mitrosak, I believe her name is. Job well done, and so we're happy to keep them. I know lunches are delicious, is what I hear, so we'll go with that. Speaking of lunches, we are raising the prices by nickel across the board. With that said, we're still the lowest school lunch in Middlesex County at $2.25, as compared to the highest at East Brunswick, which is $3.10 for elementary school. Those are, middle school $2.30 versus $3.35, and high school $2.35 versus $3.60. So, our prices are low, our food choices are good, quality is great, and so we're very happy with the food service. Last but not least, on our Finance Committee was the Budget Reduction Discussion, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to, back to Mr. Gorsky for something official.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske, and I concur. Mrs. Mitrosak is a gem to this district and an asset. She's been here over 30 years, I believe, and in my opinion, she runs one of the best lunch programs in the state, which rivals many colleges as far as the attractiveness of food offerings, the quality of food, the amount of effort that goes into the program, and the accolades we get from USDA and county office frequently. We just went through five audits for our food service program from the state of New Jersey. Every one, we went through with flying colors, with no audit recommendations, no negative comments whatsoever. And that's all kudos to Mrs. Mitrosak. Number five on the Finance Agenda was Budget Reduction Discussion. Pursuant to the adoption of the tentative budget, and as we've mentioned previously, the Board suffered a negative material event with the loss of the bond referendum. No longer was relief coming to this district in terms of facility expansion by September of 2022, and there was a rude awakening that there is going to be a fiscal impact coming of material nature that was very intimidating to the Board and the Administration. Portable classroom trailer units are extremely expensive. We're projecting millions of dollars that are coming in the next few years. That's all going to be budgeted for and paid for from the general operating budget, competing with existing programs and services offered. Facility expansion, Mr. Teig does a wonderful job making every classroom inch out of inefficient space in our schools, but that construction costs money. That's all in the five-year facility plan. And we're going to be adding a complement of 30 to 50 new staff every year going forward with the projected number of students that we are anticipating and the 1,500 unhoused students that we have now. What that means is aggregate students beyond the operational capacities of the building to teach them. So, over the next five years, there's another 1,550 students projected. We'll have 3,000 unhoused students in the next five years. That is extremely intimidating, and we're going to have to solve that, the Board's going to have to solve that, within budgetary means that are capped and with state aid that is incrementally increasing under S2. So, in my opinion, the Board acted with prudence before the final budget adoption, asking Administration for some cuts that were determined by Administration, the principals, the directors, the supervisors, to be of the least value, to put money back into the reserve accounts, and also to pay some respect to the taxpayers, who we heard from our 30 bond referendum presentations, who claimed they are at a tax-breaking point. We understand that, and out of respect to the taxpayers, there was a recommendation to give something back and make some additional cuts in the range of $275,000. So, $815,000 was proposed to be cut, and then we had time in order to fully implement the courtesy busing cuts at Oak Tree and Woodland in particular. We worked on a very good plan with the principals. We didn't have to have that in place at the time of the cuts, but we've never had an opening of school without a really refined, well-thought-out plan. So, that was forthcoming. But we, the public came, and there was a protest two meetings ago. The Board heard and passed a resolution restoring two-thirds of the approximate transportation cuts with the Woodland and Oak Tree eliminations of courtesy busing. So, that left the 415 late runs on the table, and Administration then was tasked with reviewing these cuts once more to make sure that they could be effectuated with efficiency and that it would not have a severe impact on participation and so on. Dr. Alvik arranged a meeting this week with Kathy McDonald, our Transportation Director, and myself, and we had the principals ready on the telephone as needed. And Dr. Alvik said, you know, Mike, it's just not in our DNA as educators to ever recommend to the Board a cut. I'm confident that you could find a way in order to restore these cuts through the budget savings and budget efficiencies that you create through the year, and I challenge you to do so. And I was inspired to work with the other administrators, and pursuant to Dr. Alvik's recommendation, I have a resolution tonight to restore the 415 late runs as follows. It is hereby recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education and, as previously today recommended by the Finance Committee, that the Board of Education restore the after-school late-run, non-mandated courtesy busing in the 1920 school budget. The Board acknowledges that the anticipated stress caused by the continuing student enrollment growth may necessitate a future Board to consider the elimination of this line item and other line items in future school district budgets. The Business Administrator Board Secretary is hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action by the Board of Education. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Arminio, Mr. Tofano. Any comments or questions from Board members? Ms. Arminio?
Yes. So, with restoring both, and I should have asked this in the meeting, but we were, we had shortage of time. So, out of the $815,000, restoring these is the, what would be the total?
About $315,000, $320,000.
Okay, so are we going to find that $315,000 to $320,000 elsewhere?
Yes, ma'am, and the specific challenge from Dr. Alvik was to do so without affecting program and instruction.
Okay, and will the Board and the public be apprised of that before those cuts go into effect?
Yes, ma'am. It may take a while because, as you know, these efficiencies and alternatives are identified and actualized through the course of the school year. But as we do, we'll bring them back to Finance Committee and make them known.
So, are we looking for the $315,000 to $320,000 or additional funds as well?
We're always looking for more efficiencies that will add to excess surplus.
And none of them will be taken out or cut unless the Board approves?
I think it's fair to say that nothing affecting programs and instruction will be removed unless if the Board approves. Budget efficiencies created through purchasing consortium, from aggressive negotiating of contracts with vendors, from aggressive solicitation of quotes, instead of just, you know, relying on a state contract approval where it's authorized, has created a lot of efficiencies.
I accept that, so that, but we will be, we will be told what those are when those come up.
Yes.
So, last question. Is there any item or line item at this point that you've discussed that... Is there any item or line item at this point that you've discussed that is going to contribute to that $315,000 makeup?
I have a suspicion in the areas of insurance that we're going to find efficiencies.
Okay.
And, and keep in mind that the budget is based on some use of estimates.
Right.
We don't know exact cost when we put together the budget, so we are a little bit conservative. As time goes by and we identify these things, I'm confident they'll come in lower. But, you know, just the purchasing consortium that we joined now about six years ago has saved over $4 million to this district on any item that's considered a supply. That could be a facility paper towel, it could be a workbook. If it's consumed in a school year, by joining bulk purchasing through the county consortium, we've saved over $4 million, and that's identified by the consortium themselves. So, you know, we will do our due diligence to cover this shortfall.
So we could be assured with this resolution that no curriculum, student activities, or anything like that's going to be affected at this time?
That was the challenge by Dr. Alvick, and we're, we're confident we'll accomplish it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pelori?
So if I understand correctly, we restored courtesy busing for Oak Tree and Woodland a couple of meetings ago for one year. So I'm assuming that this is also going for one year just for clarification purposes, correct?
Yes, sir. As delineated in the resolution, this restores the 415 late runs, in addition to the Oak Tree and Woodland amounts restored previously, for the 1920 school year. Again, with the, with the stress anticipated coming from student growth, that this is all on the table for next year.
Just want to make sure that, yeah, so this will be contemplated all over again come next year?
Yes, sir. We have a zero-based budget. That means we start from scratch every single year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then Mr. Gorski will have a roll call on the resolution.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Demeo?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Non-board present, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, are there, Mr. Ryback has a committee report?
Yes.
Okay.
Personnel committee would like to report. I'd like to address enterprise funds. It's something that's very creative on, on our district's part, and we look forward to doing more of it, because we have programs that are run like private businesses, they are private businesses, for-profit businesses, and we use the profits to defray costs on our programs and keep taxes down. The two funds I'd like to highlight are Falcon Care and ECE, Early Childhood Enrichment. These, these programs in the past three years have raised 1.7 million dollars, and to a great degree, it's because of the efforts of the employees. So we felt that the, the personnel committee felt that we would like to make sure that we recognize these employees in their salaries, and we're recommending to the board that we raise the salaries of these employees to at least minimum wage. Let me say again, the money from these enterprise funds, they're self-sufficient, they pay, they pay the wages, it doesn't come out of tax dollars, but the profits that these make do help defray costs so that taxes are kept down.
Madam?
Mr. Gorski?
May I quantify that? The minimum wage elevation of the hourly salaries, it was recommended by the personnel committee to go to a minimum of $15 an hour for next year, and proportionally bring up all of the hourly employees. Even though it's not a state mandate yet, they're phasing in the minimum wage of $15. These professionals handle students during the day, and it's a complicated endeavor. And as Mr. Ryback?
Ryback?
Ryback. I can't get them out of my head. As Mr. Ryback has stated, the profit from this fund is self-sustaining, and in fact goes back to, to help with the cost of growth and keep the taxes down. So it's a beautiful initiative that the board came up with a few years ago.
And we want to keep that going.
May I ask?
Sure.
May I say something? Also, the, the salary, the salary improvements for these people, they are not, they don't get benefits, is that correct? So they're, they're not beneficiaries of health care and pension benefits. So we did discuss that it was, we felt that they were helping bring in revenue to the community, that, like Mr. Ryback said, we would honor them with just a little bit more of an appreciation. And they're, they're not full-time employees, they don't get benefits, and they don't get retirement. So we'd like to thank them with a very small increase.
Do what we can do.
Right.
Anyone else for Mr. Ryback? Mr. Pelori?
Are you done, Steve?
Yes.
Very quickly, the education advocacy committee has not officially met, but we've been working behind the scenes on a few things, especially thanks to Mike Gorski for drafting a letter that we will be sharing with the rest of the board members shortly. That's going to be sent to all the legislators. We identified who that is, will be receiving it. And RFQ for getting a law for, to help us with Solina State is in the works, and that RFQ is going to go out this week as well.
Great, thank you. Any other committees? Okay, seeing none, public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We will adhere to our four-minute time limit, and when the timer goes off, your time is over. And once you come up to the microphone, you cannot come up again during that public forum.
Anthony Fizios, away to Questioning Way. Concerning personnel, have we selected a superintendent yet?
Yes, we have.
And before we did that, did we go on a superintendent search?
Yes, we did.
Was it an outside search?
It was not.
Why not?
Because the board, I believe it was a nine-to-one vote, or nine, or eight-to-two, decided to do an internal search only.
Okay. How much was the settlement with Dr. Kozak?
Could you use your microphone, please? There you go.
Excuse me, I did not hear.
How much was the settlement with Dr. Kozak?
You would have to open that information. As a board of education, that was a confidential.
Is that in the budget?
No, it is not.
What fund does that come from?
It, it comes from insurance. Mr. Gorski?
It's going to come from a legal judgment account in the administrative cost series.
Was that discussed at the finance committee?
It was discussed as a whole board in closed session.
But was it discussed at the finance committee?
It was discussed at, in the whole board during closed session.
Okay. Well, for the last two years, I've been up here and saying that Dory Alvich was ordained even before many of these board members were here. And it's a shame that you did that without a superintendent search. It's a disappointment. So now you're telling me I would have to open this settlement with Dr. Kozak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I want to make it clear that we did not not have a superintendent search, we did an internal superintendent search, which is different.
Right. How many people were interviewed?
I cannot tell you that information.
I know. Thank you.
No, it's over. It's over. Let's not encourage. You have to encourage the people.
Hi. Hi, my name is Pradeep, Ford Jake Place. Thank you for restoring the buses for Woodland, Oak Tree, and late-run buses. Thanks, thanks to the board and administrator. So I did, I did some introspection, like why we ended up here. So because of overpopulated schools. So I just digged up some other details that if we have projections that far, why didn't we go for referendum from 2007 is the last referendum before we failed 2018 referendum? 11 years, we didn't go for any referendum or any plans, put it in the public, to build new schools. So my question is, how far our projections are, and how accurate every year is our projections?
Projections for?
Projections for kids enrollment, like right now.
Increased enrollment?
Enrollment.
Mike?
Madam, yeah, I'm happy to answer that. We have enrollment projections performed by Ross Haber, who is one of the elite demographers in this state, and I believe they go out 30 years. The problem with the longer projections, more than 10.
No, okay. So let's talk about like, let's talk about like, you projected in 2010 up to like next five years, until 2015, like 2010 school year begins, and then you have projections, at least next five years, you have school projections, like what is the enrollment projections are?
We're, we're looking at like 200 to 250 students per year enrollment increase for the next five years. In five years, we project to have 3,000 unhoused students in our district.
Okay. So if we projected the same thing in 2010, by 2015, if we have 3,000 unhoused students are there, then why don't we take, we took an action in 2010 or earlier? Because if I see it's a public information that the referendum, the last referendum is 2019 and 2018, before that, it is 2007. So 11 years, we didn't plan anything for our school district infrastructure improvements. That's what ended up in this thing. So what are all the actions that you guys are taking for future growth?
How are we dealing with the future growth?
Yes.
Yeah, well, right now, part of how we're dealing with it is the trailers.
Except trailers.
The trailers, that's what we have to use because we have nothing else. But we also have an ad hoc committee that is what we're, and I have more of this later in my board president's report, but we're requesting proposals from the committee, from the, every member of the community who wishes to, to give us one, and that's going to go to an ad hoc committee for their review and discussion on every proposal we get, to see what's viable and how it will work in Monroe. That committee, when it's finished with its work, will make recommendations to the Board of Education. And we hope during that same time, during part of the process, that we do a, a town hall meeting to get more information from people who are not, or can't for some reason submit proposals.
All right. So any timeline for that ad hoc committee?
I, there is no timeframe for that committee. Right now, the deadline has been extended till July 31st. The committee probably won't be meeting again until the end of August, the beginning of September. And depending on how many applications or proposals we get, it could take them a few months to go through them before they make a recommendation.
Okay. So are we doing anything regarding the failed referendum? Are we going ahead, or are you going to put it in the public or not?
This year, we're not putting any trailers in the operating budget, but next year, we will need trailers at the middle school.
I agree. But for any new buildings, are we putting any referendum to the public?
No, not until the ad hoc committee makes a recommendation to the Board of Education.
Okay, but there is no timeline for them.
And at this time, you're.
I understand, but there is no timeline that you got.
There is no timeline.
So we will have to live with this mess for next.
Yes.
Five, 10 years.
Roger Maney, 22 Harrigan Avenue. I was just curious, as far as the ad hoc committee goes. I sent in a few ideas, and a few people that are on the committee that I've spoken to said they haven't received those. Are these proposals being filtered by somebody and then being sent to the ad hoc committee, or are they receiving 100% of the ideas from the public?
From every proposal that comes in goes to Dr. Alvick's office. She redacts the names of the people that are giving, giving the proposal. She is also responding to the person whose proposal we received to let them know that their proposal has been received. And then the committee, every member of the committee gets the proposals on Fridays.
Well, I haven't received any confirmation of receipt, and I have copies of the sent emails. I mean, I don't, I don't have them in my back pocket, but I have received no confirmation, and more than one member has told me that they haven't received them as well.
Where, where are you sending their proposals? Because there's an email address to send them.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware, and I got the email address from Frank Studda, who's one of the ad hoc committee members. And I made sure that I sent it to the proper email address.
Well, then you might want to consider.
But I just wanted to make sure that 100% of the community's ideas are getting to the ad hoc committee and aren't being filtered and decided on, that's not a good idea and thrown to the wayside, and let the ad hoc committee make the decision.
Believe me, they are not. I get the proposals at the same time as the rest of the committee gets the proposals. I don't see them ahead of time. So I'm getting them the same time as the other 20 members of the committee are getting them.
Okay, great.
So I would suggest that you resend them to, to the ad hoc committee address, and we will look for them.
Will do. Thank you.
Prakash Parab, 33 Denard Drive. Thanks to all BOE members for taking care of the bus transportation. So everyone will be happy during summer holidays. So thank you very much. Regarding the, you know, we are sending a letter to the state requesting for the more funding, so it is drafted. One of the bills, several bills I have, you guys, you might have read regarding the special education. Today, what happens, today in the finance committee, I was there, 18% of our students are special education. And we spend around 30 million, and the district, state gives us only 3 million. What the current funding formula does is, it estimates the number of students in the school. So it doesn't estimate that we have 18% of students in the school. So the bill is asking that, that when you do the funding, state funding, it is asking for the correction in the formula so that actual number of students, the state should fund depending upon the actual number of students. So I request you all, please write that in that letter. And another one thing, we all are lobbying. What, I got answers from all of our three legislators, they are going to help for this bill. Now, the next question is, Sweney and the speaker has to get this bill through the committee, and it has to be put for voting. So request is lobby for the speaker and Sweney, President Sweney, to put it on the floor so that by December, if that bill is approved and the governor signs it, I'll bet you, we'll get more than 11 million dollars for the school, okay? So that will help us a lot. So that is the request. I'm not dictating to anyone. This is, the ideas come in, I'm sure many of you might have thought of it, so don't think Prakash Parab is saying that, okay? So just, this is a thinking, so please do that. On the, I have two questions, page 37, action F. What is this education, Monroe Township Education Association? What is this sidebar agreement we have with that? And is this Monroe Township Education Association is run by the people, the members who are elected by the public? You know, that is my first question. And the second question is page 40, action number 11. It says that Education Service Commission of New Jersey will provide following services, and some services are as expensive as $132 to $150 per hour. Are these funding coming, come from the commission, or we are spending this money? So those are my two questions.
Okay, I could tell you that the Monroe Township Education Association is a teachers' union.
Oh, okay.
And they have their own.
No, I got the answer. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if Dr. Alvick or Mr. Gorski wants to answer the other question, because it is in the superintendent's report.
Page 41, yeah. Page 41, question number 11.
What, what item on page 40?
11.
Okay. Item 11 on page 40 refers to an approval for the Board of Education to contract with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. That's the county consortium, and they provide services in those various areas of home instruction, psychological services.
Are they giving us the money, or we are, at that rate, we are paying to them?
They're providing the service, we're paying to them.
Oh, boy.
And those are for classifieds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
With regard to Mr. Prakash's take on the legislation that's proposed, it would be noteworthy to understand that formerly, the state did take an actual count of special education students in the district by information submitted in the application for state school aid, ASA. The whole purpose of this report was to count students and categorize them in four tiers back in the day, from, you know, something like speech therapy is a lower-cost tier to autism being the highest tier. And they based your state aid on that, until the state started to wean off and reduce, and then stabilize, and then finally got off the ASA altogether, to where we're wondering why we even submit this report every year, because it doesn't correlate. correlate to your state aid anymore. So it would be nice if the state went back to an actual count instead of a projection. You're absolutely right.
My name is Vish. I'm forty-seven Greenwich State. So, and I want to thanks each and everyone, so, who approved for buses are taken back, and thank you, we are so tired, we are run here, and thank you for bearing with us and taking care of this. And second fundamental question I have after seeing this report, and I saw this, this year, two thousand eighteen, it is, two thousand nineteen, it is increased only twenty-three students, entire Monroe schools. Is that true?
The increase of students?
Yes. Uh, it's a page number, page number four.
Yes.
It's possible that comparing particular months this year to previous year could have a lower than actual increase in the number of students. That's why we rely on the actual state reporting of students that correlates with the ASA that I just mentioned. That's as of October fifteenth of every year, we count every student in the district. That's the most reliable, and that has shown on average an increase of about two hundred a year.
So do you have a, uh, number of students increase on two thousand seventeen and eight, uh, eighteen and nineteen?
Yes, we have all that information in central office. If you send an email, I'll give it to you.
Do you have that estimated number?
Um, just off, rounded, every year, we have, um, had increases in enrollment of about two hundred students a year, and we have a projection from our demographer stating that we can expect the same with fifteen hundred more students coming in the next five years.
No, no, I'm talking about only eighteen and nineteen. We have now nineteen and twenty.
Eighteen and nineteen.
So how much it is eighteen and nineteen?
Eighteen and nineteen increased two hundred kids over seventeen, eighteen.
Wow, two hundred, only, this year is only twenty-three kids?
It's twenty-three years from this month compared with this month last year, but it's not really a transitional month.
Enter, okay.
There's some, there's some variation in the month to month, but if you, like I said, if you standardize it year to year, you'll see the numbers.
Okay. Um... So I'm looking here in the numbers in the sheet, it's saying, uh, May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. So if you see this one, the calculation, it came total is twenty-three people. It's like twenty-three more students. So my question is, if it is only twenty-three, why we are getting issue with the budget? It's a, just twenty-three students is more, why we have a trial is there, and so many issues we are getting. And it, you know, we are reporting every time you come here, and we, we, everyone is reporting, there is so many houses are coming, and if so many houses is coming, we are supposed to get a lot of money, and the sixty percent or fifty-six percent of the taxes whatever you're paying in the Monroe Township residents, we're supposed to get fifty-six percent for the BOE. That means we're supposed to have a lot of money. Do we are getting from township what we wanted to get, or no?
Madam?
Yes.
Yes, we're getting every, every dime that we're supposed to get from the township. As a matter of fact, on tonight's agenda is the tax payment schedule for the board to approve.
So if we are getting, I didn't say any reason why, we're supposed to get a lot of money, we should have a lot of money with us, it's increased only twenty-three students.
You're, you're comparing May to May. If you compare a different month, like maybe March to March, or January to January, you might have a...
But even it is a twelve months, right? It's a total twelve months.
I, I, I...
You know, sir, 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 I think if you look at our website, we have the PowerPoint slides from the budget presentation, we have an eight-year, um, historical presentation on enrollment, and you'll see we picked up nine hundred and ten students over the last, I'm, I'm not sure of the increment, I think it's seven years. Check the website, and please give me a call, I have all the demographic information in my office, and I'll be happy to show you.
Thank you, I'll look and come back.
But we are picking up two hundred students consistently every year.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Doug Thoy, four Tamarack Road. First of all, I get the impression, as I've been listening, and any meetings that I've missed, I've watched the videos of, but particularly based on what I've heard tonight about the restoring of the after-school and the courtesy busing, uh, I have the impression that our budget for the coming school year nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty is very, very lean. Is that correct?
Would you like to answer that?
In my opinion, the budget is lean, appropriations are growing as the board philosophy defined by going to cap because of the requirement to keep up with student enrollment increases and the costs associated with that. The budget grows every year by about four million dollars, approximately.
Because if the budget is very, very lean this year, and if next year we have to add new trailers, I'm not sure if the public really understands when you say that the money has to come from our operating budget. The operating budget is the budget that you use for paying the salaries, buying the textbooks, providing the buses, paying the teachers, everything essentially that goes on in the district. That's what the operating budget is. So if it's very, very lean this year, then I am very concerned with how in the world we are going to afford to bring in new trailers next year without making rather drastic cuts in that budget of next year. And I think the public needs to be well aware of this, and I think the board needs to be well aware of this. People tonight, and the previous night, when you voted to restore courtesy busing, and when you have now voted to restore after-school busing, they commended you for that, they thanked you very much for that, but do they realize next year, where are you going to get the money to, to put these trailers into place? I, I just, I, I think there's a nightmare that you face within a year that the public is not aware of, so I want to make that comment. I do have a question, though. There's a salary being approved tonight for the Director of Food Services, uh, Natry Mitresak, and you're also approving a contract with Metz Corporation, uh, and in that contract, it makes mention of a management fee of seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars. Who is, who is that manager that's, that, that management fee is paying for?
Madam?
Mm-hmm.
The only cafeteria employee, beg your pardon?
You can hear.
Oh, sorry. The only cafeteria employee who is an employee of the Monroe Township Board of Ed is the Director, Nancy Mitresak. All the other employees are those of Metz Culinary Management. Metz is appointed by the board to be the management company, meaning that they train, they hire, they, they serve the staff who provide the lunch services to the district, and they also procure all of the necessary supplies and food items for the district, and then charge us that back every month. What they get out of the contract is their management fee. So, so they're managing the operations, they have a minimum guaranteed profit. Nancy Mitresak has a, a very demanding job of complying with all the food service requirements, uh, all the menu items. Like I said, we just went through five audits by the Child Nutrition Department, Nancy handles all of that, and, um, she's a very busy individual.
Okay, you're also approving tonight, uh, various individuals, and I personally do not know these individuals. If my time is up, then I'll save the question.
You can save it for the next public forum.
Okay, although I would like to mention that my part of the speaking was much less than the four minutes, because your part of that time in responding to my comments, okay, ate up some of that four minutes.
We understand that, because that's the way it's been for the, you ask the question and we answer the question, and it...
Okay, so, so in the future, it would be wise to ask all questions and not, not have you answer those until I finish asking all my questions. Is that correct?
That could work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Krishnadekale, Levendje, please. Uh, I have a, I mean, in continuation of what Doug was pointing out, did the board consider having policies on what kind of advertisements we could run, right? We could run the local businesses advertisement on our, um, grounds when our teams are playing, home teams are playing, on our school buses? These, have we considered those as revenue aspects?
We are looking at different ways of advertising. We have, um, it will be a part of the policy committee as we move forward. We have looked at advertising on buses more than once over the past few years, and for safety reasons, we have decided that that is not a good thing. So while we won't advertise on a bus, we can advertise on our, um, fields and places like that, but we need to work on a policy, and that would be done with our board attorney, to see what would be legal and not legal.
Right. Um, do you have any timeframes when the policy would be out for public to take a look at it, and...
There, we have no timeframe for that.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, one of the questions that came up during the last meeting is, do you have a, uh, estimate into the number of trailer, trailers you would need at the middle school and the high school for next year?
Not at that time, not at this time, but during the budget process, which starts in September, that will be part of the discussion on what needs to be put into the budget and at what school.
And, uh, do you foresee that we would, not only trailers, right, we would also have to hire new teachers, and, uh, is there, uh, a hiring freeze on the number of teachers we would need, or, uh, would that have any impacts?
We hire staff based on the need, and the need is, is in, um, based on growing enrollment. So staff would, could include bus drivers, it could include paraprofessionals, not necessarily just teachers, but wherever there is a need to have a new staff member, that could be in the budget.
And, um, for children with learning disabilities, right, are there any, um, I, I hope, I mean, are there any improvements in the way they're being handled, and...
That is worked out with pupil personnel services, and in students' five oh fours, and in students' IEPs, and based on, um, uh, ne- needs of the student, of each individual student.
And I, the way I understand how the, um, cuts have been restored is that we would look for, um, uh, basically budget efficiencies that we could bring back the three hundred and twenty-five thousand for this year, right, for the busing.
Well, that's, that's a task that Mr. Gorsky is, um, or wished to take on, was, was challenged to do that, and I'm sure that he will be able to do that. It does not mean that next year, when the same conversation happens and we have to make cuts, that, um, there are going to be some very, um, hard decisions that the board is going to make. Not everybody will be happy with any decisions, but if we have to cut, we're, we're giving, I guess, the, um, the community kind of like a warning at this point, that because we did it this year, doesn't mean we're going to be able to do it next year. And we have to look at next year when we're creating a budget, all non-state, non-mandated activities and programs, and that includes courtesy busing.
So you're encouraging the public to stay involved and informed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mona Mehta from One Mission Drive. I would like to thank everybody for restoring those buses. Um, I have a question, like next year, say if the same thing comes back, so will public be informed what are the other options? Like, we were all ready for having subscription buses, so if something can come up way ahead, so we all know that what can be done, because it's not at all safe for all the kids to walk. We just had an accident two weeks ago, right at the entrance of Stratford, so it's a very high-risk area, so I would appreciate if you can come up way ahead and inform the public that what are the other options, because lot of towns, they already have paid services, so I think we can also bring something like that on the table. And the other question is the referendum for the new school. Uh, I think you, there's no dates in mind that when the next referendum will be there?
We have no date, we don't even have a referendum, that, we don't even know what we would put out for a referendum at this point.
Um, I've also heard that lot of times that state mandates that the new school needs to be built. Is there anything like that, when state would mandate, or, um, any idea about that? I heard that lot of towns, the state mandates, they come into the picture, when the school gets very overcrowded, they mandate that the new school needs to be built.
No, what hap- do you want to explain this, Mike? Cause sometimes you explain it better than I do.
Yeah, after two defeats of, of referenda, with only approved costs contained in, in the both referenda, you can go through a legal process to appeal to the state, where the state can override the voters, but in extreme rare circumstances will they contribute any money towards the project other than normal debt service aid. Freehold Borough is an anomaly, uh, the state couldn't raise enough taxes to support the debt service for the bonds for the schools desperately needed.
So at this point, the state is not coming in to build a school, they're not coming in to give us any money for a school, the state is not involved in Monroe, um, referendum or building in any way, shape, or form at this point.
It looks like a long battle here with no end.
Both of our projects had non-approved costs contained in there to, uh, an extent which the state would require get eliminated in order for them to get involved. To eliminate the non-approved costs would present a school building and a school facility that is extremely dissimilar to every other one in this district. There would be no parody, you would have a bare-bones school that, in my opinion, would be unattractive for anybody to go to.
When we put out another referendum, we want to make sure that it's going to pass, because we can't afford to keep putting out a referendum and having it fail, and then taking things out of our operating budget to compensate for not having a referendum, which is why we're taking our time with the ad hoc committee.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Um, I am Bala Satyamuthi, coming from sixty-seven Morgan Way. Um, it was good to see a lot of students being recognized and the retirees as well. Um, appreciate everyone doing for the Monroe Township, um, and also thanks for restoring the bus services. Um, that's the right step, although it, it's like one year, I think that, that has a great help for us, so appreciate everyone's effort on that. My question is on the enrollment projections. So I'm looking at the finance budget presentation, so from two thousand sixteen-seventeen period to seventeen-eighteen, the student increase was like one thirty-six, and then from, from that on to eighteen-nineteen, it was seventy-eight students, and then the projection from nineteen-twenty is like nineteen, is one eighty-two. So I'm looking at like hundred seventy-eight, hundred and eighty-two, but we have been hearing like the, like two hundred fifty per year, it's all over the place. So I just want to know how confident are we with the, all these projections, because looking at the numbers, it doesn't give me we have the right numbers.
Madam? Um, I'm, I'm certain that it, once the ad hoc committee process becomes more engaged, uh, they will request that the Board of Education approve an update to the demographic study, which will freshen up the report. Um, but we are confident with the results that the demographer has shown previously. I can't remember the, the, the number of students, that it was off, but it was really immaterial from his last to the actual count.
I think it was, uh, one year, it was one student, we were off one student.
It was extremely close, um, and the demographer has been working with this district for a number of years and, and understands the trend here very well. Now, the projection, by the way, for everybody's understanding, the next five years has, according to the projection table, the most intense growth out of the thirty-year period. It almost levels off after, uh, a ten, fifteen-year mark, but the next five years, we have projections of very heavy enrollment growth of fifteen hundred students in the next five years, and that's from the report of Ross Haber.
Okay, so, so we have the right confidence in how they are projecting, and it matches with what you're saying?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right, thank you.
Sai Kumar Agaram, twenty-four Trakka Street.
Just again?
Sai Kumar Agaram, twenty-four Trakka, yeah. Good evening, and, uh, once again, I want to thank all of you for passing the, you know, the busing cuts, and, uh, really appreciate the people lending a ear to the public on that. Uh, so, I, I'm sorry, like, you know, I've come here with not very well-prepared for my questions, but, no, I'd just like to ask, I know I've been hearing about this, two hundred additional students, right? So what is the average cost of an additional student which the school board incurs on an annual basis?
Madam?
Yes.
Having just... Having just been asked that by Mrs. Arminio in the Finance Committee, it's approximately $14,900 a student. But that's an average, and it could vary greatly. Some of the special education students could be 30, 50, and then much higher than that.
Okay, so you're saying this 14,000 odd dollars, it's, I mean, it's every student, it's $40,000? Because that should be some fundamental-
14, 14, yes, sir.
Yeah, 14. But with every additional student, do we have this as the average cost? Because that should be some commonalities, right? So now, over a period of time, does it still stay at 14?
No, as a matter of fact, you'd be surprised to know that our per-pupil costs have been decreasing because of our capped budget and our steady enrollment growth. When your costs are minimally increasing because your budget's capped and your number of students, which is the denominator, is growing heavily by 200 a year, we're actually identifying that the per-pupil costs are decreasing slightly going forward.
Okay, great. Okay, so then, again, I heard that you made the projections with the state demographer about like 200 additional students every year, right? So is there a place where I can find numbers for what are the actual additional households that are being added? And what is the tax, you know, what is the tax revenue from those additional households? Is there a projection for it?
I would encourage you to contact me to submit a OPA request, where I could provide you with the demographic study that projects student enrollment. There's a lot of information in there on assumptions, which go into new housing starts and the developments in town that are specifically contributing to that. And I could also provide you with the net valuation of ratable sheet that calculates all of the ratables in the township, either for a one-year or two-year period if you're looking for a comparative analysis.
Okay, sounds good. So, but I guess what you're saying, sir, is that, you know, whatever we incur as, you know, like a student increase versus the household increase and the tax revenue from it, it doesn't match up to what our school budget can actually, you know, afford to house those 200 students?
The main restriction here is the tax levy cap that's in place that only allows the district to grow the tax levy between 2% and 3% per year. No matter how many people move in town, and no matter how many students that come into the district, we can only grow the tax levy here in the school district between 2% and 3%, which means belt tightening, unfortunately.
Okay, fine, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public? Then at this time, we'll close the public forum, and we will go to, which is new on the agenda since last month, the Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Alvek.
All right, I'm going to keep it short because I know we had a lot of presentations this evening. So what the board members have in front of them is a one-sheet page on the World Language Department. So I just wanted to share what our offerings are in that program. I figured that would be a good compliment to our Seal of Biliteracy Awards this evening. Our students start with World Language in grades three through five, and they're exposed to Spanish through a blended learning model. What that means is they have 30 minutes a week in class with a Spanish teacher who teaches things like application, cultural lessons with the students. They also do 30 minutes at home with Rosetta Stone. So it's an introduction to a world language. Starting in sixth grade in our middle school, students take a half a year of Spanish. Beginning in seventh grade, students take a half a year of program. That's actually reduced from last year, from this year. So next year, it'll be a half a year program because we're increasing the civics at the middle school. In seventh grade, though, they do have an option of possibly switching from Spanish and moving to Italian or French. In eighth grade, the students continue to study the same language that they started in seventh grade. So they have that two-year foundation before they go into high school. So in ninth grade, if students decide that they are going to continue with Spanish, they would take an assessment to see whether they could be in Level Two or Level Two Honors, depending on their ability with the language. Or they could opt to take a different language. If they choose to do that, they could take French one. If they took Spanish in middle school, they could take French one in high school. So it doesn't have to be the same language in high school. We also offer Latin at the high school. For our graduation requirement, students are required to have two years of a world language, but our guidance counselors do work with our students because there are many colleges that require three years, three consecutive years of a language. So we want to make sure the students have those, whatever they need to go into their college level. So our high school requirement is two years of the same language, but it could be different, depending on where students want to go after high school. We do offer advanced placement to our high school seniors in French, Italian, or Spanish. And last year, 27 of our students took those exams, and 23 students scored a three or higher. That's considered passing at the, with the AP exams. Again, we talked about the Seal of Biliteracy. That's the students take the stamp assessment, and we recognize those students this evening. And French, Italian, and Spanish all have honor societies that the students can be inducted into through their scholarship and their service. So there's a lot of opportunities for our students to be studying different languages in our schools from grades three.
Any questions for Dr. Alvek? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the Superintendent's Report, and Mr. Gorski will be filling in for Mr. Goodall.
Good evening. Mr. Goodall is absent this evening because he is visiting the Naval Academy with his son on a college visit, and we wish him the best. But you may recall that a few years ago, Mr. Goodall was tasked by the board to do an investigation. And he asked me to read the following statement, which is just limited to this for this evening, on the results of that investigation. "As a result of Mr. Goodall's investigation into allegations which were raised against, which were raised at the August 22, 2018 board meeting, Mr. Goodall determined that no conflict of interest existed with regard to any Monroe Township School District employee who is a proprietor of or who is employed by pediatric interactions in the Monroe Township School District." And that's all I have on that particular matter.
Okay.
With regard to the Superintendent Report, the current district enrollment is now 6,871 students. And that does not include out-of-district students that are sent to private school placements, which is approximately in a number of about another 50 students. So, Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, I will recommend at this time Superintendent Personnel Action Items A through CU under the Superintendent's Report.
Second, Mr. Reibach, Ms. DeMeo, any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Reibach?
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Action Items A through CU under the Superintendent's Report has unanimously passed.
Thank you.
That brings me to Board Action Items. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that Board Action Items A through Y be approved under the Superintendent's Report. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Reibach, Ms. DeMeo, again, comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
No on L, M, and N, yes on all, on all others.
So noted. Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mr. Reibach?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through Y is approved, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, under Superintendent's Report has passed.
Thank you, so we will go to the BA's Report, Mr. Gorski.
And that concludes the Personnel and Board Action Items, as again, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Those are not my recommendations, I want to be clear, those come from the Superintendent of Schools. Now, Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through AAA be approved by consent, roll call. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Reibach, Ms. DeMeo, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski's report? Okay, Mr. Gorski, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Reibach?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Recuse on J, yes on all others.
Thank you. Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through AAA under the Business Administrator's Report has passed. That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll go to the Board President's Report, and I just wanted to give an update on the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Board of Education's Ad-Hoc Committee, the date for requests for proposals has been extended until July 31st. Since we keep hearing from the public that they wish to have a voice in the next referendum, we are looking to the, we are looking out to the entire community to give their input to the Ad-Hoc Committee for consideration as to the best options for housing our ever-increasing student enrollment, which is expected to reach 3,000 unhoused students over the next five years. We have sent out this Request for Proposals flyer out in the Falcon Flyer, the Falcon Express, the district website. We posted it on social media sites, which have been shared throughout the public. We've been, we have distributed this to the members of former Ad-Hoc Committees, and we will be sending this out in the township's quarterly newspaper. Dr. Alvek, is there any other places that we have done this?
No.
No? Okay, to date, we have only received 10 proposals, but I believe that there will be a couple more that will be sent out to the committee on Friday. We are looking for viable options to house our students. This is not about politics or elections, the development of our community, the master plan, funding our school district, since that is not in the realm of our responsibilities as the Board of Education. Our job is to educate every student that comes into our district with a thorough and efficient education. So what we're looking for is how are we going to house these 3,000 students? Once the Ad-Hoc Committee has completed their review of all submitted proposals, a recommendation will be made to the Board of Education at a later date. And it is possibility, there's a good possibility that we will be holding a town hall somewhere in the middle of this whole process. So what happens is that anybody could submit their proposal, either in writing to the board office, or you can email your proposals to ad hoc, A-D-H-O-C, at monroe.k12 nj.us. They go to Dr. Alvek's office. She redacts the names before sending them out to the whole committee. She sends a response to the person who has, who have sent their proposal in, letting them know that their proposal has been received. And then the, I believe, she goes over with the committee chair, and then it goes out to the whole committee when we get them on, the committee should get them on Fridays. So as of now, I said, as I said before, we have gotten 10 proposals. We are looking for more because we want to make sure that we get as many of the community members involved in this process as possible. So again, the date has been extended to July 31st, and we hope to hear from many members of the community. At this time, we'll go to other Board of Education business. Anybody from the board wish to speak, Mr. Tifano?
Kathy, I'd like to say something about your statement that you just made.
Yes.
I think as a board, we are 100% responsible to criticize the leadership that, in this town, that put us in this position because that directly affects the students' education. So I think we should, as a board, take action on looking to find a solution to the overbuilding in the town and somehow, if the town doesn't want to stop this building, they should contribute more money towards educating the children. And, you know, it's absolutely our responsibility to criticize who's making this mess for our children and taxpayers.
And I'm not saying they should not be criticized. I'm saying that we don't need people to give us a proposal that says, "Stop the building," because we can't stop the building. We need viable solutions on how we're going to house those people coming in.
But we can make the public know that this is a big issue and it needs to stop because that's why we're in the predicament we're in.
I think the public is very aware of, we've heard that through the, all the 30, 40, 50 presentations we went to.
Right, and I think we need to listen. I mean, we hear it, but we're not listening. I think we need to do more. Like Edison is suing their township because it's just inundated with students and can't handle it. So I think we need to take action as well in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Pelori?
Madam President, members of Board of Education and public, I want to make three points known. I think the one thing that I request, that whatever action we take in terms of cutting budgets and things, we communicate with the public before anybody else self-servingly communicated with the public. And I think we have seen that impact of we trying to do the right thing and people getting the wrong impression of it. And I think we need to do a better job in communicating whatever we're trying to do at the Board of Ed ahead of time with the public so that we don't have the type of situation that we had. The second point I want to suggest is having a timeframe for the Ad-Hoc Committee. I understand that this is a long process. The longer we wait, the longer the solutions are going to come, and the longer it takes for us to get a referendum onto the ballot, I think we got to work with the time-bound situation rather than open-bound. And quite honestly, I appreciate Kathy and the Ad-Hoc Committee for giving an extra month. If we got 10 in one month, how many more can we expect in a month and a half from now? Quite honestly, I'm not very optimistic about it. And towards that end, I know I requested the Board President, and I just wanted to be on the record, that I think we should have an open house also so that we're open, transparent, inclusive of public to come and make their suggestions and make sure that, you know, they're going to be incorporated into it. And I appreciate Kathy for listening to me and suggesting that there will be an open house at some point of time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Reibach?
I just want to follow up on your comments, Madam President. I think getting this information out, requesting from the public their ideas for a new referendum and how to deal with the overcrowding. I think if anybody can help us get into the senior developments, I mean, 50% of this community is, are seniors. And I know a lot of them are retired teachers and administrators who might have some excellent ideas for us that they might want to share. But I don't know if they're really getting our information. Those developments are very closed, are very hard to get into. And so if anyone has any ideas on how we could get this information in the, to the senior communities, I think that would be a real positive.
We did post it on a couple of the senior pages. I don't know how many seniors from Monroe go on there.
Yeah, I know.
But so far, that's, that's how we're getting to the seniors. But yes, if anybody knows how we could reach out to them or send them something, or send them to their HOAs, it would be helpful. Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, I have the same notes that Mr. Pelori has. So I would echo his three points, but I would add that, as I mentioned in the August 30, I'm sorry, April 30th meeting, one of the things that we need to communicate with the public, because it keeps coming up, and if we have an open house especially, and again, it's communication with the public. I have requested, this is like the third or fourth time, I've requested an analysis comparison between the state coming in and building a school and what the district was planning. There's still confusion about what that actually entails. So I am, again, on the record, asking that we get, and I was told that I thought it was going to be in Buildings and Grounds or if Mr. Tagg was going to supply that. But I think it's something that the board should understand, and we keep hearing, you know, just like statements that it's not going to be such a great idea if this happens. But I think we need an actual analysis, talk to the state, see what they provide, and then show the public what the balance is. And it may well be that we need to wait for a referendum. And in that case, I do think we should have a timeframe. We have been struggling with referendums for years. I respect every, I mean, being a participant in the public for 20 years now, I respect that the public is coming and wanting to be informed and aware. But we have spent 10 years doing this. And I think that we need, we need to move this along and get this. We cannot wait for months and months and months. And I think you mentioned that we should be taking our time. We can't tell people- We can't tell people that if we don't pass referendums, it's going to cost us all that much more, and then say we're going to take our time for the next referendum, it's just inconsistent. So I believe we should have a timeframe, time limit, it must be done, the big thing is we must impress upon our public, that is our responsibility to move forward in a timely fashion, yes, with all of their input, but in a timely fashion for the kids. Like I said, you can't, we can't have it both ways. We can't tell them that if they don't, if they don't vote for a referendum, it's going to cost that much more money, because what's going to happen is, if we wait and delay and say, "Well, we're not ready yet," and we're not, and then we say, "Well, we waited so long, it's going to cost that much more," it shows a lack, I think, of responsibility on the part of the Board. So I definitely echo Mr. Pelori's, we definitely have to set a timeframe, we should be, I, I would have, I would have liked to have gone out for another referendum this year, I think the next possible timeframe for a referendum has to be set now. It's our responsibility to get this moving. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Siegel?
Hello, I wanted to just, first of all, I want to thank all the, congratulate all the students on their achievements tonight, and I'm wishing all the staff retiring this year a happy retirement, and thank you for your dedication to our students. And I want to thank the Woodland Mill Lake, Woodland School Media Specialist, Mrs. D, for inviting us to the poetry slam event last Friday at Woodland School. The Woodland PTO had sponsored a poet to come to the school and work with the kids during the school year. Fourth and fifth grade students wrote their poetic masterpieces and received feedback from the poet. They had a culminating event where the poems were read by the students, but they not only read them, they recited and they acted them out, so we do have some budding high school performers one day. Their poems were very impressive, so kudos to all the students and Woodland staff and the Woodland Mill Lake PTO for such a wonderful event.
Thank you. Mrs. Lang?
So I wanted to give an update, on May 18th, I attended the NJ SBA Delegate Assembly. So did Mr. Rutske, and we were very fortunate that there were quite a number of vocal people who got to the microphone before I did, saying that, asking to, to fail the resolution. It was a resolution put forth by some of the smaller school districts in the state of New Jersey who are angry that they're losing the money that they shouldn't have been getting for the last 10 years, and that's simply what it is. They, you know, we talk about school finance, and we talk about the problem with the financing of our schools, and we have to be real honest, that there are school districts in the state of New Jersey and locally that for over 10 years have been getting what's called adjustment aid or equalization aid, so that they hold harmless. So even though their enrollment has gone down, their funding has not gone down, they're still getting the funding for students that are not existing. There are school districts in the state of New Jersey where the taxpayers are not paying their fair share of the tax burden for their schools, we're all paying it through our taxes. So I was very happy that as a delegate assembly, we voted down this resolution, because the, what they were asking is that the NJ SBA would then go out and try to fight for those school districts to keep their funding, and you can't have it both ways. You can't fight, you know, thank you. So I also wanted to mention, one day, I'd come over here to the high school, and I walked into a robotics exposition, that was absolutely fantastic, and Venita Gurishakar, who is our teacher of engineering and robotics, organized the first-ever engineering and robotics exhibition for incoming eighth graders, and it was fantastic. And I know that we didn't know about it, I, like I said, I kind of just came in for another meeting, and it was there, the students did incredible things, we had students who made their own Pac-Man game, like full-size arcade Pac-Man, it was, it was absolutely incredible, and I just want to congratulate Ms. Gurishakar, she did a beautiful job. I also attended the Two Empty Bowls dinners that we did with Ms. Anthony, Rupa came with me to the one at Brookside School, and then I attended one at the Senior Center. At the Senior Center, our students who were very involved in the Empty Bowls Project with Mrs. Anthony, sat with our seniors and explained what hunger is, what food sensitivity, having that fear of not having food is for families, and, and how it is a growing problem within our senior population. And so she did, once again, Mrs. Anthony did a fantastic job, we're very lucky that the PTA supports them, that the MTA supports them, and that program keeps growing. And then finally, I wanted to thank Mrs. Schmetterer and Mrs. Costantino for the Cultural Arts Festival, which was beautiful to see the, there, we had students that were performing their traditional Indian dances and their traditional Indian costumes, we had students that were performing traditional Indian music with the instruments, it was a beautiful night, and then they provide, I will never be able to say the gentleman's name, but they, the performance of the special song that was written just for them was fantastic. So it's another great evening that I was there, that we, we got to, excuse me, Mr. Virgil Sequera is his name, that we got to attend and to see our kids. And Mrs. Schmetterer and Mrs. Costantino, that middle school chorus is incredible, I just, I am, every time I get to hear those kids sing, they're just absolutely fantastic. We have an incredible music program, so.
And that musician came all the way from India to, just for that day, to sing with our students, and I think he wrote the music and has been performing with them all year, you know, via, yeah, I don't know how they did it, but they've been working all year on that, and that was the first time he had, was able to sing with our chorus, it was great.
It was a beautiful event, it really was.
Kathy, can I, just, I'd like to make another comment.
Sure.
Patty, as a follow-up to what you said, just struck me that, I know, I'm very happy that the delegates voted down that proposal and fall thank you.
It was a pretty close vote, right?
Well, what I wanted to say is, in the New Jersey School Board, in the Legislative Committee, in anticipation of that vote, we had a bit of a debate there also, and quite a few of us were standing up to these districts and saying, "You've been getting more money than you deserve for years, and we haven't, it's time that we fix this," and that we really just wouldn't listen to them, and we've had it, we wouldn't listen to them, because they've really been taking advantage of the system.
Yep.
And the system must change, this formula must change.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so we've been sitting here all night, the public's been sitting here too, and there's this check that's been sitting here behind Mr. Gorski, and nobody said anything about it.
Yes, I was going to.
So, we've sit there, so maybe Mr. Gorski would like to explain the check.
You're going to give that to the Finance Committee, Mike? To the Chair of the Finance Committee?
Couldn't be more obvious than a reminder, bring it up during the VA report, right over my shoulder, but I somehow missed it.
Use the mic, Mike.
Thank you for, thank you for reminding me. What we have here is a check from the Eric North Safety Grant, which Mr. Tagg and I applied for this particular grant, and it's in the amount of $43,499.82, which as part of our 1920 budget, was anticipated to be used to support the school vestibule project, which will enhance the entrance with hardware and security features, and even bulletproof film for the glass in the front of the school, it's going to go a long way to safeguard students and staff by fortifying the entrances to our school. So I want to thank Mr. Tagg for all of his efforts, and this will, the check came after the agenda was prepared for tonight, so we will have this on for the next meeting.
Okay, again, yay, that makes 86,000.
Could I ask, is that a private, is that a private contribution, or is that, is that grant like from a private, or is that a public entity?
It's a private consortium.
Okay.
Of, of insurance.
Okay.
Companies.
Thank you. So it's like a foundation from these?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time on the agenda, public forum, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We will adhere to our four minutes.
Please don't scare the reporter.
How are you doing, Doug?
Doug Poey for Tamarack Road. Couple of comments on what I heard Board Members saying tonight, Mr. Tofano mentioned the fact that, you know, the township needs to be the focus of some of the frustration of the parents. I think I also heard at past Board meetings that the residents, when you, when the Board decided not to do the courtesy busing, that the people in Stratford said, "We don't have any sidewalks." I haven't been in Stratford, so I don't know if that's true or not, but I don't think they would say it if it's not true, but in my opinion, the residents of Stratford, who were here in, in quite a quantity for several meetings, those residents need to be going to the township saying, "You need to build sidewalks in our community, because next year, we may not have courtesy busing." You know, that needs to be done. The township should not be granting waivers for no sidewalks, when somewhere down the road, the, the school cannot afford to, to bus those students that could easily be walking to the school. I agree with Ms. Arminio in her comment about, "We need to move forward quickly with another referendum." It takes quite a few months simply to develop that referendum, and to delay it and delay it and delay it is not good, it's just going to cost more money. I, I'm going to ask a question, but I don't want you to answer it. Okay, and this does tie into some other things, the, the negotiation of the next teacher contract, I think you'll be facing that next year. You will also be facing the problem of having to add more buses, okay, within your operating budget. It is my opinion that our teachers are not paid as well as teachers in many other districts, and if you're really going to have quality education in this district, you have to have better-paid teachers, and particularly at the bottom of the pay scale, because that's where you're attracting the best teachers out of the colleges. You made some movement in that direction, I believe, in the last contract, but you have a way to go. And tied to that, in my opinion, the teachers are the primary asset of any school system. You simply don't have good instruction without good teachers, and those teachers need to be well compensated. I looked at some of the salaries you've approved tonight, and I find it amazing that we have people being approved for salaries that are far in excess, are in excess of our highest-paid teachers. After years of working in this system, our highest-paid teachers, I believe, are getting $86,000. You approved contracts tonight for people making $90,000 as a secretary, and I'm not demeaning the role of a secretary, but if I were a teacher and I would say, "Hey, there's a secretary in this district that's making more money than I will ever make under the present salary schedule," to me, that is criminal. You approved a maintenance custodian supervisor, a payroll supervisor, a network operations manager. I don't know any of these people personally, I have nothing personally against them, but to me, it sends the message that you've got your priorities mixed up. The highest-paid teacher should be making more than what they're making, the lowest-paid teacher should be making more than what you're offering them. This is how you're going to improve the quality of education in this community. And finally, and this is my question, with all of these pressures of a new teacher contract, of having to do more buses, more trailers, will the Board consider seeking a waiver of the 2% cap? Because otherwise, I don't know how you're going to do it next year. Thank you.
And I'm not sure we can answer that question right at this moment, until we get underway with the budget process for next year. That's, that's, could be a consideration. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, I'm Linda Bezaski, I live at 388A Orington Lane in Rosmore. To answer Mr. Ryback's question, or his comment earlier, I've written five articles so far for the Rosmore News.
Thank you.
About our education system. The Rosmore News Editorial Committee, of which I'm a member, has given me carte blanche to continue writing an education series in our newspaper.
Thank you.
Okay? Mr. Gorski, Mr. Goodall, Jerry Take, have all been extremely generous with their time in proofing what I've written, to be sure that it's factually accurate. The first piece I did was about the referendum, before the referendum, and my little job at Stop &amp; Shop encouraged people to go out and vote, some of whom said afterwards, "No, we voted no," but nonetheless, getting feedback from people. I've, I've already spoken with Dr. Alvic about continuing with the, with the educational component, right now, I'm talking about the history of our schools. So we did K through, excuse me, the elementary schools in the August issue that's coming out, the July issue that's coming out the 1st of July, middle school and the high school will be the topic of the August issue, they're letting me do 1,500-word pieces, okay? I don't know how to get the word out to the rest of the retirement communities, but this is what we're doing in Rosmore.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay? Well, if you would like some of these request for proposal flyers, we'll be glad to get them to you.
I'll copy some, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Closed session resolution, be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and the superintendent evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed, can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Who made the motion?
First, motion.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Steve seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, the Board will move into closed session, I don't think it should take very long. At this time, we are back, the Board is back in public session, and seeing no one in the public forum, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be held on July 17th, 2019, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Rutske?
So moved.
Mr. Rutske's moving, Mr. Pelori is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, and everybody have a very happy summer.
Thank you very much. That was quick.